Welcome, everybody. This stands for pledge of allegiance. Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. First up is for the agenda, is there any additions or deletions?
We need to delete for this meeting the under business operations item G, approve the intergovernmental agreement for the sewer project with the town of Lowell. We have one item remaining for the attorneys to sort through, so we'll be bringing that back at the next meeting.
Is there anything else?
Yes.
For removing item for G under business operations number two, approve the intergovernmental agreement for the sewer project with the town of Lowell. Any further discussion? All in favor would say aye.
Aye.
Alright, we're gonna move into public participation. The first, we're gonna have two public participations. The first one is going to be for public comment related to agenda items. So anybody that indicated, everybody indicated for non-agenda items, so that'll be at the end of the meeting. I will let you know when that comes up. Alright, reports, super generous report.
So first up tonight, we have guests here from Lowell High School, our horticultural class. And Ms. Cross has a team here, so if you all would come over, they're going to give us an update on the landscape at Lowell High School for the RDT Red Devil Trades addition. And while they're coming up, I will queue up their slide that... While we're getting the multimedia set up, go ahead and introduce everybody.
So my name is Whitney Cross, I'm the ag teacher at Lowell High School and I'm also the F3A advisor. I actually graduated from Lowell when I was younger, so I'm a former Red Devil, new Red Devil.
I'm Timothy Feaver, I'm a junior at Lowell High School.
I'm Patrick Rummer, I'm a junior at Lowell, I'm in our engineering class.
I'm Alex Anderson, I'm a senior.
Hopefully. So we came here tonight on behalf of Mr. Anderson's invitation to present to you guys a landscape that my students designed for the new Red Devil Trades building. This was a collaborative effort and we sort of created it as an engineering design challenge. All 50 of my landscaping students worked either by themselves or with a partner to create a design for the building. And then within their classes, they had competitions to see who was the best presenter and who had the best concepts. Out of both of my classes, six students were originally selected and we have four remaining that stuck around to present to you guys our idea for the landscape and for the RDT building. Tonight, one of our students could not be with us, Izzy, and this was her slide. She's really passionate about flowers, she's worked a lot with Mr. Wathan, our maintenance director, and some of our other staff to kind of come down to the best five flowers we felt for the building. The first one we have is the purple cone flower, we have a pink tiger lily, in the middle there, we have a wax flower, in the upper right, we have hydrangeas, and in the bottom right, we have Georgia blue veronicas.
Okay, so first we have the purple cone flower, very heat and drought resistant, easy to bloom. Easy to grow and they bloom for months and they make great plant flowers, and we recommend 10 plants. Next we have the hydrangeas, they're very colorful flowers, and their colors are from purple to blue and white, but it all depends on the pH soil. And we, and they bloom from May to July, and we recommend 12 plants.
The next flower we have is the wax flower, it's their filler flowers, they have a neutral color and they fill up space, so it'll be perfect to fill any open gaps in between the flowers, and we recommend our native plants.
So this is the pink tiger lily, this is a bulb and a perennial, so every three to five years, recommended to dig up the bulbs and split them since bulbs regrow. And they don't require much water or maintenance, they don't need to cut back every year, and we recommend these plants.
So this is the Georgia blue Veronica, and we decided it's a good pop of color, and they also fill space, and we decided they were a good idea because they they bloom throughout the entire year mostly, and they're also a good plant for...
So this is our tree of choice, the crepe myrtle. It grows to be 15 to 25 feet tall and 6 to 15 feet wide. It blooms from midsummer to late fall, and it does drop its leaves and flowers in the fall, so there is a little bit of maintenance with that. And it also requires seasonal trimming to keep the size. And this is our recommended mulch. As you can, yeah, sorry.
So when we were initially asked if we would be willing to design a project, we were given this map here of the RDT building with the, basically kind of just take after it and get on it. They asked us to design the flower beds that are highlighted in orange and the one tree species that is indicated by the small circle in the bottom left there. My students and I took this, we did a lot of research, we worked a lot with local landscaping companies, our maintenance crew, our grounds crew, and even some admin at the school to kind of get their opinions, their likes, and ideas that they had for the vision, as well as other students' ideas for the vision. So looking through everything, and after we narrowed everything down, and we've had several meetings to plan everything, and double check and make sure that everything fits with landscaping at our other campuses, and that it's gonna be hardy to stand up to student traffic and other things that happen at schools. We have come down to this conclusion, we plan on next year, my horticulture students will grow all the flowers and plants besides the hydrangeas, and that's gonna cost us roughly $3,239 and some change. However, if we were to buy all these plants from a nursery full grown and fully mature, it would cost around $4,230 and some change. So we are saving some money by having our students gain some hands-on experience and knowledge to grow those plants. And then the other bonus as well, we thought it was really cool, and like, we are very proud of LHS of our traditions, and so we thought it'd be really neat. This year, our landscaping students designed it, and hopefully next year, my new landscaping students will get to install the design. So there won't be any installation fees or design fees, because it was all our awesome students' minds.
Alright, so we're sort of, like, this is the first idea we use to incorporate other classes, like graphic design and coding classes. The first one is in the top left, as you can see, we decided to like make a plaque possibly, and they would incorporate like a barcode that any of like the students passing by the tree could scan it, and it would bring a website up for information about the tree, and that was pretty cool. And the graphic design can also help design what goes onto the bench.
The next image, Izzy's not here to present on it tonight, but she's really passionate about the arts and she's very artistic as well. She took Ms. Rivera's ceramics class and fell in love with it, and so she really wanted to make sure that that program was somehow included. And so we came up with the idea to either have walking stones or little figurines. There's even different devices that students can make using clay that will help keep the plants watered, but add a nice decorative and personalized touch, and continuing that Red Devil pride that we embrace every day at LHS.
Yeah, next we have a bench, and it would incorporate the machinery loading classes, and they can do like a Red Devil logo on the bench to commemorate the opening of the new building.
We also want to incorporate the painting class, to paint a mural on the side of the building to represent the trades and the building and Red Devil itself, to give the building more of an appeal instead of just gray and red and black.
And these are some images, my students and I, we were fortunate enough to get in contact with a landscaping software company, and they were able to let us use the software for a one-month trial. And so going through that, Mr. McLinden was a huge help to us, and he flew his drone and got these awesome images for us. We went out and got some pictures, we worked for weeks out there measuring and figuring out drainage, and bothered Mr. Wathan a lot with emails. But this was one of our first images that we edited from Mr. McLinden's drone footage, and this is showcasing kind of the southwest side of the Red Devil Trades building. We decided along this area to just go with the hydrangeas in a black, or a dark brown rubber mulch. We anticipate this being a high-traffic area, and I think it was Mr. Hevell or Mr. Favors told us that the kids are gonna walk right out of the door and just walk over everything. So we wanted to make sure we picked a really hardy plant species. This is another image, like just looking at it from a different angle, and again, just keeping with the hydrangeas, keeping it simple, something that's gonna last hopefully for a long time there.
Alright, so right here, this is the side by the parking lot, so we actually extended the, like actually this grass area, it slopes down, it's just dirt right now, but we extended it with the software that we used to show what it would look like, and we think that that maybe a potted plant would work there, because there's gonna be kids like walking around like their cars, so we just want like a good plant there that would be hardy as well.
This is where the crepe myrtle's gonna be at, and a good visual of where it's going, how it's gonna look and everything. How about Holt's?
So this is the new loading dock area, and this will be when you drive past the high school, heading either north or south, south on Holt's Road. We're gonna have two longer flower beds there along the side of the building to kind of highlight it, and we're gonna have the one crepe myrtle there in the center.
Is that it? I need to tell you, number one, thank you for coming tonight. Well thought out, nice presentation. Mrs. Patrick wanted to be here, she's not feeling well, she hasn't been feeling well, she says her regrets, and they're gonna do a great job, we got to see it the other day. Questions from the board?
I think it all looks amazing, you guys did such a great job, I'm excited to see it all in full fashion.
Great to see the, you know, the class coming and doing a project for the school, it's definitely great to see that.
Yeah, we're really passionate about it.
I was in all the classes myself.
I was very excited to see all the different flowers, and I don't know if I missed it, but will everything be flowering like it is at once, or are there stages? Because it looks beautiful like that, but it's been around years.
Right, even if it's staged in too.
That was one of our original goals, was to try and create a variety of species that would bloom at different times of the year, so that there's always some pops of color, some pops of greenery. The software had some limitations, and that was one of them unfortunately. Almost all the plant examples that it gave were just the plant itself when it was in full bloom and perfect, so that would be amazing, but mother nature has already...
Beautiful.
Good job, guys, you guys worked it out for us.
The next update is, we did receive our check from the Indiana Department of Transportation yesterday, $10,000. If you recall, originally they wanted to acquire that little sliver of land on the south side of Lowell High School for the crosswalk for approximately $1,600. Our legal firm was able to negotiate at least more towards an appropriate market value for that, so that's an update on that. We've had, yesterday, the handbook committee got together at the high school, we had representation from across the district, I see some of the faces here. So we had elementary, middle school, and high school represented. The major talking points are in the areas of dress code and cell phones, I know that's shocking, but so we're looking at revising our handbook, and our next meeting is in a couple of weeks. We plan to bring that to the board for approval in June. I'm going to pass the perio mic to Mr. Diou, who has some updates regarding our strategic plan, project-based learning, and preschool business.
So we were really proud to host another community event this week. We invited folks with an open invitation through social media, through Skyward, through some direct contacts of email to those parents that are like involved in PTOs or active at the schools to try to bring as many folks together to provide feedback on the draft of our strategic planning documents. So as you guys recall, there are guiding principles, or revised and updated mission and vision statements, and a series of four strategic goal areas with objectives that accompany them. So all the while, since we had our kickoff meeting back in January, along the process, we had the anticipation of a May community event, where we could start to garner feedback on what was close to a polished product, so that they could see a lot of work that came together. It kicked off with an open presentation about the process, all of the input that went into the draft that they were going to see. We then broke into three different breakout groups facilitated by core team members, with which there are nine of us, and each of them tackled a different portion of either the guiding principles, mission, vision, strategic goal areas and objectives, collected feedback on what they liked, collected feedback on how they thought that it spoke to the mission and vision of the district, and collected feedback in terms of like, what are we missing? What are things that like, because we were so close in that room from our roles within the school community, what are some outside perspectives that maybe were overlooked that need to be represented in there because they're very important to us going forward? So we collected that feedback. In addition to that, throughout the month of May, Mr. Anderson is going to be visiting all five buildings, in addition to departments, to offer additional focus group interviews, and might be able to speak to that a little bit, the first one kicked off yesterday at the high school. So looking at kind of the remainder of the timeline for strategic planning, those focus group interviews coupled with the community input will then lead us back to a core team retreat with our facilitator from HYA. We will then process all of that, determine what revisions, changes, additions need to be made, so that in June, we'll come to the board with a lot of pride in a new strategic plan that will guide us, and then we can get to work to the action statements, the SMART goals, the responsibilities, and the way that we're gonna monitor progress in the year throughout the summer months, and really kick it off and make it a part of what we live and read every single day to start the 22, 23 school year. So your formal presentation is coming in just about a month's time or so, and there's gonna be a lot of different voices, a lot of different perspectives that went into that. So with great pride that we're gonna be able to show that off to you. Any questions on that that I can answer? Back in January, I offered a presentation on project-based learning. If you recall, it talked about where we were, where we are, and where we plan to go. And I gave you a lot of context, because I know that board members who are new to us weren't necessarily here back in 2013 when we began that journey. So I tried to pave the pathway with some context, talk about changes, struggles, and learning moments that we've had along the way. One of the things that was promised in that is that rather than taking a one-size-fits-all approach, we really wanted to identify where is it most appropriate for a rich and faithful project-based learning experience to happen, where that's the tool that can most effectively deliver that instruction. So we took it back to our middle school and high school administrative teams and our building leadership, we've been having that conversation. So now at this point, we've arrived at it. At the middle school, we are going to focus this summer on all of our English teachers, all of our social studies teachers, and each of the three special education teachers, so that's a total of 15. In addition, the three administrators at the middle school were not here when we did that roll-up. So they are going to participate as teachers going through the project planning process, side by side and learning together. That's going to help to equip them to be effective coaches and supports for the teachers of those departments as well. At the high school, we're gonna maintain that focus at the English 9. You know that part of the graduation pathway is that that PBL experience checks off one of the box requirements. We wanna make sure that those English 9 teachers get the refresher, can recalibrate for the new faces that are there that weren't there along the initial part of the journey, and allows them to come back together. We use the metaphor a lot of like making sure our arrows are all pointing in the same direction. This is a chance for us to make sure that like the language, the design, the outcomes, all of those things have fidelity again. We recalibrate and the arrows will be going in the same direction. That training's gonna happen right away, after the last teacher day, which is on a Tuesday. We've got facilitators coming in on-site on Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday for the three-day workshop for those teachers to participate. We're really excited by it, I got to meet with the middle school staff today, had some communication via email with the high school team, and we'll follow up with that. And we're gonna be, we're gonna be set on the right pathway for that, so I'm happy to share that update for the refresher.
And then there was preschool.
Yes, so we had a team, Brandy Muhav, who is the principal at Oak Hill Elementary School. She is the committee chair for our preschool early learning center committee. Working with Robin Randall, who you guys know from the facilities study committee, one of our three architect consultants, put together a site visit in Illinois at two different early learning centers. So we visited one in the morning, got a tour with their executive director, learned all about everything from like the students that are admitted into the program, costs, and we were salivating at just a beautiful facility. Excited to kind of share the floor plan of that and the very intentional design work that we saw. It was so thoughtful on behalf of the architects, like every single experience that the kids would have in that, that building was intentionally designed for some effect. Had a nice lunch with them, and went to our second building afterward and saw another early learning center. And I was gonna say Wheaton, but two was...
Mount Prospect.
Mount Prospect, thank you. And at Mount Prospect, same thing, a lot of great learning spaces, a lot of great design work, and we took a lot back. So about a 90-minute or four, a little more, car ride home with our team is gonna be briefing and talking about it. Brandy is the chairperson for that, is bringing the committee back together to debrief it as a whole, so hopefully we can talk about next steps for like one of the short-range goals for early learning potentially, and what might be considered the long-range goals, and those will be shared with the board as well.
Very exciting.
Yeah, it was, very exciting.
That's all we have for secret minutes reporting.
Board member reported, anybody have anything?
I attended the board meeting for the special ed talk, and I said, "Come on, plus," I actually had a couple good news items to talk about. Dana knows a lot, I'm actually smiling already. First item is, as you know, we didn't quite meet the 45% spending amount, and for the audience, state dictated that all schools will spend 45% of, is it the education dollars?
It's the state tuition.
State tuition on teacher salaries, and we were below that because special ed teachers, we belong to a co-op, and we pay the co-op, and teachers actually work for the co-op, but they're in our buildings, but we didn't get credit for any of those salaries, even though we pay the co-op.
We pay the co-op through contract services, they're basically...
A million dollars.
A million dollars for teachers, so, but now they passed a law that we'll be able to get credit for that. So we will now be, they passed a law that all schools, there were amongst co-ops, they had co-op for the special ed, we had that problem. So the legislature agreed to the law to make it so that we will be able to count those in our coffers and states. So what will be our percentage?
It does bring us up to 45.87.
Yeah, there you go. That was good news. Also, the allocation amount that we will pay into the co-op this year is gonna be less than it was last year, which is really nice, it's the first time for a long time. The reason that is, we'll actually be getting more services, I mean, you know, extra kindergarten class here in Lowell for special ed and I believe others. So we're getting more people for less money. Reason why is that the federal government is paying more amount per kid now for their support, so the co-op passes that savings out of us. But that was pretty good news. How much was it? Forty, forty-seven thousand?
I think it was like 43, yeah, 43 or 47.
Anybody else? We've got nine. Under board, regular business dissent items. Number one, approve the minutes of the meeting held on April 14, 2022. I have a motion and a second, any further discussion? All in favor would say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same side, motion passes. Number two, approve payroll and claims. I have a motion and a second, any further discussion? All in favor would say aye.
Alright.
All opposed, same side, motion passes. Personnel. Will approve the personnel report dated Thursday, May 12, 2022. I have a motion and a second, any further discussion? All in favor would say aye. All opposed, same side.
We did invite Kevin Peitz, excuse me, Steve Ganzebell, and Kelly Blank tonight, and I'm trying to see if anybody's in. Kelly?
No. Kelly, and I haven't met Steve, so I don't know what he looks like. No, I don't think so.
And how about Amy Patterson? Oh, geez, okay, we're good.
These are, these are all the new hires here? For all those that are here getting hired, I welcome you, and motion passes. Alright, so this is operation number one. Approve the renewal of the Tri-Creek School Corporation's food service contract with Chartwell School Dining for the 2022-2023 school year.
This is the first year I'm coming to you with a renewal for Chartwells, who does our food service under their food service management company services here. We went through the request for proposal process last year, which opted, it gave us a contract for one year with the option to go with four renewals, so this will be the first renewal of that five-year RFP process. Chartwells, in your packet there, gave us a proposal, which is within the contract standards that we accepted back last year, which would include 6% increase in their fees. That's not unheard of, a lot, I was expecting a little bit higher, given the price of food and everything else that's going up. So this, I'm very pleased with this here, as far as only receiving the 6% increase. Again, at the end of, actually I just had a report today. Given the fact that we were free meals all school year, our profitability is up high in there, so we're able to add extra services next year, which would include a chef on staff here that will be able to go into the classrooms and do some nutrition training, and do some really interesting things in the cafeterias for our students, as far as taste tests and different displays. We are also looking into purchasing a van, because we are, we will be transporting food from one central location as far as our commodities, not necessarily the food that we cook, but we will have to store all our commodities at the high school and transport those to the other locations, because it streamlines our fees and we get less fees done that way. So purchase of a van will be added there, and on our own personal staff here, I will be bringing to you next month a recommendation to allocate one of our current employees, one employee that we retained here, to a food service director position for the district. This is a new compliance thing that is required by the DOE, so I'll be bringing that to you too. So all of those added bonuses are included in the 6% increase for value added for our students. So before you, it's just the first renewals that I recommend, approve and please.
Thanks. I have a motion and a second, any further discussion? All in favor would say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same side, motion passes. Blue Ridge Grounds accept the rebid of the HVAC renovations at Lake Prairie Elementary School.
Okay, so I have Jeff Petrowati here, our architect, to help us out a little bit. We ran the rebid process, if you remember, we did Lake Prairie for a full HVAC conversion plus LED, and we have a budget of about 3 million, a little over 3 million, and bids came in at 4.5 million, given the situation just labor and everybody doing HVAC projects right now and the cost of materials. So we had to go back to the drawing board and come up with a different way of handling this. So we rebid this, removing the LED and tweaking the plans a little bit, and downsizing it, not going to full war, change out of everything that we intended, but tying our new system into our old system with the hopes of future, forward, we'll do the full project once prices level out. And I've got Jeff here to explain a little bit further about exactly what we've been during this time.
So this bid just includes basically the boiler work and chillers, so it must have been limited to just the boiler room and the high side doors, and the disruption to students' room. So it mostly limited to just the boiler room and the high side, so the disruption to students' room. I hope that you're worried now being a start on the boiler room, getting all completed, so we'll be ready to move to winter. In the winter time, we'll be able to change out the chillers and.
So it's just a matter of time is what you're saying, to do the chillers and everything?
Well, there's, there's a delay again of getting equipment, right? So we've been hoping to get boilers to get going immediately, but the chillers aren't gonna come to. Chillers weren't gonna come till late August or September, which works out anyways, because you want to keep the curtains running now.
Yeah.
Southern months, then we take them, very much, we take those offline.
So everything will be new with boilers?
Well, it's still be new, the chiller system will be new.
And then you're thinking more than ever the lights?
Right, in this, in this, we got, you don't have to, but you can do that on this future project.
I understand.
And then the additional HVAC work that has happened in classrooms, we can handle that. So everything's off the path, the control systems will be.
So before you, you have a recommendation here for the rebid, rebid to award for, to circle R mechanical in the amount of eight hundred and sixty-four thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars. That's the rebid right there. We did bid, an alternate bid, to provide temporary cooling, just in case. We're gonna reject that right now, because we obviously have a plan. And we hopefully won't need temporary cooling in that building. Hopefully, everything that we're designing, we won't have to do that. So we're gonna reject the alternate that we had on there, but the recommendation is for that eight hundred and sixty-four thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars to circle R. And we had three responsive bids, circle R, they were pretty tight, between eight sixty-four and eight ninety-two, so it wasn't too bad. And they can meet all of our timelines from what they've submitted. Anything else to add, Mr. Watson?
No, nothing, no. I think it's a good timing of it, and since we pre-purchased, I think we worked out that way, because I looked at the price a week ago and it's up ten percent since we pre-purchased. So I think it was a good idea.
So we pre-purchased the unit in December. A lot of these schools received their S R money and went ahead and started, but they're just ordering their stuff now. Where we pre-purchased, because we were already working on our HVAC here in twenty eighteen, we did Oak Hill, twenty nineteen, we did Three Creeks. This was part of the plan, so we weren't, we're not using any of our S R money on this. We're using S R money for remediation and classroom needs rather than HVAC, because we were already on that side of changing our HVAC here. So this is funded through our bond money that we had sold in October.
So we still, we still have that two point two million left?
Roughly, yeah.
But how do we distribute it in Peterhouse?
Well, we didn't do the air hem, we didn't do the ceiling work, we didn't do the classroom unit work in there. That's something we're gonna have to consider in our next phase, whether we do an addition there or something like that. So we'll be hanging on to that money to do that. We still intend on doing that building, because it, right now, Oak Hill and Three Creeks have the cool sense units in the classrooms. This building does not, so we eventually want to get them on that system too and do the LED. So that's, that's a future forward program, maybe next summer.
Which we already have an air hem.
Correct.
I'll make the motion.
I have a motion and a second, any further discussion? All in favor would say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same side, motion passes. Curriculum instruction assessments, curriculum review and adoption presentation.
Yes, and if I could, I'd be happy to invite two co-presenters up with me from the middle school. I'd like to welcome Ms. Weddies-Pitcock and from the high school, Ms. Bridget Swinford. They were thrilled when they got the email from me, asking them to co-present with me. A gift basket I'm sure is on its way at some point. So we are happy on an annual basis, in May, I have the opportunity to go through something that we do every year at Tri-Creek School Corporation, which is the review of curricular materials for a specific department. I always like to begin with just kind of like our roadmap and timelines, so you have an idea of where we are and where we're going. We do still maintain the cycle that is dated and is not required anymore. But for the most part, when you look at like textbook vendors and companies that are putting out new copyrights, they're still very much staying true to this review process. So in the twenty-one, twenty-two school year, we are reviewing the math curriculum. We then make a recommendation to the board in May. Those then, the materials are put into the classroom for the following year, the twenty-two, twenty-three school year. So as you look to next year, we'll be moving on to science. After that, we go to a lot of our specialty courses, so business, fine arts, specialized courses. You then go to an elementary specific reading, handwriting, jump into E L A in world languages, and then complete the cycle with social studies. So the nice thing is that if you would have seen twenty, twenty-one up there, we completed social studies last year. The new materials were in place for this current school year. This process begins in September, so we get settled as the school year is going along, and then committee and team members come together from each of our three levels. So we have a K-five committee, that is comprised of three teachers from each of the elementary schools. So a total of nine teachers, plus administrative leadership, plus myself. When it's specialized like math, our committee is comprised of the department. So Mrs. Pitcock is the department chair, work at the entire math department at the middle school, Mrs. Swinford at the high school, the entire math department at the high school, so that made up theirs. There are conversations that are crossed, but for the most part, you're working specifically with your band and talking about transitions from like five to six, eight to nine, kind of come as we go along the way. Leading from September all the way up until May, I wanted to just kind of go through our process that we follow year in and year out regardless of that. So that first phase is very much a brainstorm. We collect, we identify as a team what needs to be gathered to review the effectiveness of our current math curriculum. So you're looking at data, you're looking at materials, student results, updated standardized tests, blueprints from I-LAR, anything that we brainstorm, that we say, we should be able to bring this to table, so that in step two there, we review it. Let's start saying, what story does all of this tell us about our students, the effectiveness of our curriculum, opportunities for growth, and the strengths that we need to build upon? Then, because a part of this is identifying and looking at new materials, we always want to be ahead of the vendors. Vendors are great salespeople. They can tell you everything you need in a math curriculum, especially littered with like the bells and whistles. We never look at a single product until our team creates a rubric and criteria for what's important to Tri-Creek School Corporation. So we put our values into that rubric first, and once we've got that approved, we then start to look at vendors. And I don't remember if it was February or January this year, every year there is a textbook caravan, goes around the state, where you get all of the big companies who come in, they usually get like a thirty or forty minute block, they give you the bells and whistle sales pitch. From that, we kind of identified those that are the contenders. We invite them back to our facility so that they can actually speak directly to our needs. We try to give them like a custom agenda of topics, so that we don't get the same spiel that we got for everybody else. So we do that in the late winter and early spring. We then go through that review process again, we hold the rubric and the expectations up to those things, up to those companies and materials that we're considering, bring together the entire team, come to a consensus recommendation, and then here in May, we make the proposal for the school board to review and consider. I thought it was important to share some of like the specific questions that we challenge ourselves to answer at each of those different grade levels, because it talks to you like, again, about the priorities at Tri-Creek School Corporation that we really wanted them to speak to for us. So the first one is, what does the data tell us? In other words, how are our kids achieving and growing? And how does the curriculum address these varied levels of students? So we obviously have a broad spectrum of those students that need remediation and/or intervention, those that are at grade level, and those that are above grade level and require enrichment or that push. Do the materials effectively address the depth and complexity of our Indiana academic standards and align when appropriate to standardized assessments? So obviously, our Indiana academic standards drive our instructions, so we want to make sure that we're addressing them. When we say depth and complexity, some will say that, oh yeah, this is higher level thinking. It's not until you get math experts to say, this is saying it's a D O K, like a complex question. That's just the title next to it. It's not nearly as complex as they're advertising. We can't do that without the expertise of our educators, and that's where we put so much stake into them going through, demoing some of those lessons with their teachers, or I'm sorry, with their students, and talking as a committee. What is the quality of the formative and/or summative assessments aligned to standards to monitor achievement and growth over time? So we want to be able to see, how are they progressing? What can we see predictable in addition to some of our more larger progress monitoring tools like N W E A? What are the computer adaptive resources to meet students where they are to both address achievement gaps, amplify conditional growth, and offer opportunities for enrichment acceleration? We know that as a result of the pandemic, that achievement gap has grown for a variety of different reasons. So because we are such a technology-rich district and so blessed to have a quality infrastructure, we want to make sure that technology integration and computer adaptiveness, meaning that it's meeting kids where they are individually rather than one size fits all, is a key component of what we purchase for these students. And finally, do the curriculum materials support high-quality instructional strategies as identified by Domain Two? For, for the board members, Domain Two is a component of the teacher observation tool that we utilize. And it's important to note that like all of the language in there comes from two best practice researchers, John Hattie and Bob Marzano. So we want to make sure, if you've got these materials, is it going to allow you to meet the outcomes that we identify as either effective or highly effective on the observation tool? So those are some of those second level of review questions that we have to come back to the table and talk about multiple meetings over the course of the late winter and throughout the spring. In addition to that, I think it's always good to get outside perspective. So we have all of the voices inside of our building. It's very important to look at resources who are looking at it from their perspective. So there's a great coalition in central Indiana called Keep Indiana Learning. They originally were called the Central Indiana Service Center. They have been putting together wonderful P D and workshops around math, textbook adoption and review. They put together a rubric that we took a lot from, we actually really liked the work that they did with their committee. And they went through and applied their own rubric to each of the different vendors as well. So we could see like, where do we line up with what Keep Indiana Learning people are saying, math specialists, and what we're saying? The emblem to the right is the Ed Reports, which is another one that a lot of schools will go to, because they're taking that unbiased approach of like, what are we going to see as strengths for this at each of the different grade levels from a student perspective, from a teacher perspective, and from a parent's perspective? So we brought those in as well to kind of inform conversation. So that leads us to like a high-level overview through you guys of what we're recommending at the K-five van, the middle school, and at the high school. I'm happy to share at the elementary that we have had six years of everyday math, and our recommendation is to stick with that curriculum. I put up there that one of the biggest drivers of this is our data validation. Before the pandemic, during the pandemic, and out of the pandemic this year, when you look at data like N W E A, you see that not only are students meeting, they are exceeding their growth goals in every single K through five grade, year after year after year after year, as a result of this curriculum. It's working on a tool that is not aligned to it, it is showing that our students are having math mastery. Another thing that you're gonna see from me in July, when the new I-Learn scores go out, we can see to our geographic neighbors or anyone in the state, the impact of the pandemic. Meaning that, obviously, standardized test scores in the state went down during that year, where some kids were hybrid, like us, we had a virtual academy and some onsite. Overall, the state scores wiped out. What's really interesting, when you look at our K through five math scores, is we separated ourselves from the pack and actually moved ahead from where we were pre-pandemic, which is further validation of the impact of that viable curriculum that was in place. I'm excited to show some data to you guys when we get the July results, so we can really finally compare I-Learn twenty twenty to I-Learn twenty, I'm sorry, twenty twenty-one to I-Learn twenty twenty-two. That'll be the first time that we have comparative analysis. So two huge data points that really speak to the effectiveness of that. We did know that there's an opportunity for improvement. We see that an area of weakness is math flat fact fluency, K through five. So we've got two programs that we're going to be bringing in for all students to access that are computer adaptive. They're gonna explicitly work on math flat fact fluency. In addition, because we've had many of our materials for six years, a part of this is that we are going to do a refresh of like the math manipulative kits, the math game kits. These kids have like done all they can with the whiteboards that they were given at the beginning, so we're gonna get a refresh of the whiteboards. We know exactly what every classroom needs to make sure that all of the materials, even though the core curriculum are the same, the materials are gonna be refreshed so that they're complete across the district as a part of this. So that's our recommendation, and I'm really excited by it, because we're seeing tremendous results as a result of that with our kids. So I am now going to pass it over to Mrs. Pitcock, who's going to speak a little bit about the middle school direction.
Hi, thanks for having us. Those of you not familiar, we currently are using Springboard, which we've used for three years now. We really bought into that, because as a school doing project-based learning, it was very valuable for the problem-based learning. However, with being a one-to-one district, it's not very laptop-friendly in terms of it's a workbook and it's all that, doesn't have some of the other things that we have found with our McGraw-Hill reveal. So one of the big things we liked is the curriculum design in terms of it's a constant spiral of skills. So all year, kids aren't doing something in August and not seeing it again until I-Learn. They're constantly spiraling, there's review activities, and this is a constant for all levels. So going into our intentional design to meet the need of all learners, right now, we have different programs for different kids. Reveal allows one curriculum to kind of check all of our students. So with some of our reports and things like that, students can, we can go back and reteach for those kids. Kids who need a higher levels and critical thinking skills can do those types of activities. Our assessments can be targeted towards one class versus another class, and these are all things that are provided within this, which, you know, teachers usually do that, and it's a lot of work. And now, not only are you doing it, but you're seeing reports instantly through this program. So it's nice for the kids to see their immediate success or not success if they did learn something. So that'll be great, that goes along with the progress monitoring. Alex is something we used years ago, and it's now part of the Reveal program. And again, we can use that to teach a specific skill. Kids who maybe are in seventh grade and miss some sixth grade stuff, they can go back and fill in some gaps independently. Some of our higher level thinkers can move ahead when needed while all getting the same curriculum. So it's really able to do that, which we, we found very interesting. And then one of the things with the student engagement, which on the next slide just shows some of the, you know, this is a drop and drag, which a lot of our kids will see on like an I-Learn test, so they're doing activities all the time. You know, just launching your lesson, if you guys have ever been in a middle school classroom, ask, heard a kid walk in your room and it's utter chaos, to have something ready for them to look at and engage them immediately in their learning without knowing they're learning or, you know, doing a math problem immediately, you've got some of these activities. This angle activity, something like this, would tell students they're right or wrong, so everyone's independently working on it. Teachers have this on their screen, so I can put up, you know, Johnny's screen to show the class, like, look at what he's done. Or this is, you know, this is good, or I can see if someone's not doing something. So this is all through my computer and their computer. And we also have just your traditional paper copy workbook. So this same activity I could do without the computer, because we want to make sure kids get both. We want to have them using the computers, and we also want to shut those sometimes and do our paper pencil type of stuff. So we're thrilled with it. We had no intention of not using Springboard this year until we found this, and we're super excited.
I think it's also worth noting that McGraw-Hill is the publisher of Everyday Math as well. Everyday Math is rooted in research from University of Chicago, which by design, it's always like, you have to get them algebra-ready. So there's a lot of frustration, I often hear from like parents, it's like, that's not the way I learn math, these like tools and these ways. The idea is that instead of learning any shortcuts, to learn them the actual mathematical solutions, it prepares them for algebra readiness. So when they get to complex problem solving, the shortcut breaks down at a certain point, and we need to make sure that it doesn't do that. Reveal comes from that same authorship, that same research, you're gonna see a nice continuity there of application of those skills foundational and the toolbox that they're building at the elementary level. So I'll pass it over to Bridget, who'll speak a little bit to the robust course offerings we have at the high school.
So yeah, quite a, quite a few more things to look at here within that. But we actually kind of, we started with that same idea. If you see a lot of our books, Algebra One, Geometry, Algebra Two, we definitely wanted a consistent grouping within those three classes. That's, those are the classes that almost all of our students will take, actually, all of our students will take Algebra One, Geometry, Algebra Two. And we ended up choosing Larson is the author of the Algebra One, Algebra Two, the pre-calculus book, the honors pre-calculus book, and the AP Calculus. Ron Larson is kind of Mr. Math for a lot of people. Ron Larson is kind of Mr. Math for a lot of people. He is regarded as one of the math experts, four hundred some books he's written over the years. And all of these were written... He started with calculus, and he worked his way backwards. So all of these then will align. We do know that not all of our students will be taking calculus course. And that's not necessarily how they were written. But all of them, Algebra One through that calculus book, will use that same language. Will use some of those same techniques. Will introduce the algebra at the algebra level, but with that little bit of a twist. So when they do see that, if they take a pre-calculus or calculus class, they really do see that connection and why they had to learn that in Algebra One or why they had to learn that in geometry. So we have our alignment through those. So again, the students will get that same language all the way through Algebra One, Geometry, Algebra Two, those same kind of techniques that the teacher can help with. When it comes to our trigonometry and the finite, those are actually very similar books to what we're using now. Those are actually Savis and Pearson. And then for the probability and statistics and the AP Statistics, we, just like we went with Mr. Larson for the core, we went with Mr. AP for AP Statistics. Bach is sort of the... considered the expert of statistics. And he... Both of these gentlemen, they write math books, and that was kind of important to us. We wanted... We didn't just want authors. We wanted people that understood math and understood how the kids were math best. So two similar books, obviously one geared towards the AP, prepared the AP exam a little bit more and a little bit more rigor than the others. The Larson texts... Larson is a proponent of making math accessible. Anyone can access any of his textbooks free online, no website needed, no login needed. One of the big selling points, I'm going to kind of jump with Kevin, was the technology for that. Of course, our textbooks can be online, we have paper copies in the rooms. But students can access the textbook. They can access any of our assignments. We can do... We can edit assignments. Students can work on problems. They can access themselves if they know that they need extra help. One of the very big pieces that we love about the Larson series is what they call Help Chat. Students at home, when they're stuck and it's centered at night because they just started at homework, there is a live person that they can call and they can get help with through the individual problems. Of course, then there's videos that they can access that directly match the problems that they're working on. So they don't have to go searching through Khan Academy or searching through other sites. They can access, using again, the same verbiage and the same language that they would have gotten in class to help and support. For the... Any of the resources that are available online can be downloaded to their devices. So if a student has maybe if you Wi-Fi at home, they can be downloaded before they leave school that day. If they know that it's going to be a long weekend, they can still then access those documents and then upload them when they get back to school. So all of those online components are available to them. Similar with the elementary... Oh, that's our middle school. Every lesson will have a continuous... Includes review of previous skills that will help them build into the next section. And again, with the goal of the students seeing a connection from one lesson to the next and one parent to the next, and how math is really related as opposed to these individual pieces. So there's a constant cycling through of topics and skills that stay on through. There's videos that connect with STEM, National Geographic videos. Again, things that hopefully will start to reinforce the relevance that even when kids think that they don't need math, that maybe there's something hiding in there for them that they won't realize that they need. Additional, we... Delta Math is an adaptive program. Again, started by, well, a calculus teacher who wanted a resource for his students to be able to practice more calculus. So he sat down in his basement and started Delta Math. It has now grown to a... Not, I wouldn't say a curriculum, but a format of calculus all the way down through sixth-grade math with every topic we possibly want. Allows us to assign individual students or classes of students. If a student is struggling on a particular skill, we can hone in on that one skill and the student can get immediate feedback. There's videos, there's help. So that's a little bit more of a supplemental material that we've been using now for a couple of years that is, well, free, which is kind of the best part. So it's a great program. AP Classroom is college boards online. So for two AP classes, most of our online work is going to be through AP Classroom. I mean, the students are in that class to earn the college credit through taking a test. So you go to the experts there and prepare them using those online components as well.
So as kind of like a capstone to this conversation, talking about next steps beyond, sharing with the board tonight, obviously, professional development is incredibly important and valued at Tri-Creek School Corporation. We don't want to just place this into their laps and say, go. So ideally, we'll have professional development that begins this summer that they can do virtually or in person. They will then be prepared to kind of like plan through the summer months as what changes need to be made, get into that first unit, and then we like to bring them back in like October or so. So they can say, you've lived it for a month and a half. What do you need to know now? Because you're really getting like foundational-based knowledge to get started. How can I really leverage and utilize the entirety? Bring them back to follow-up again. And then the third time, when we get to the winter months, we're about to switch into the second semester for the same reason. So mapping out our professional development. Part of the outcome of that is that big fidelity piece. So we know that if we want to create professional learning communities that can look at how students are performing on grade-level standards, how they're achieving at any given moment, and how they're growing over time, maintaining fidelity to the curriculum is how we're going to know if it's effective or where there are gaps to see that it isn't. So that's one of those components that the PD will lead to. And from an accountability measure, we can work together effectively as a team rather than in isolation. Reflection and monitoring. So we need to say like, because these are new in some cases at the high school and middle school, what is the impact of this current viable curriculum that we notice immediately and then over time? Typically, you'll hear about three to five years to really see the residual effects of change from the impact of a curriculum. That will then inform strategic planning. So I told you that in July and August... I'm sorry, June and July, we're going to start creating those actual metrics, SMART goals. Think of things like math scores in NWEA, math scores in iLearn, math scores in terms of growth over time, math scores from local assessments that are now being brought in. Those will be components that we can write to at the building level that ultimately feed into a larger goal of academic success within the district strategic plan. So because we've got that alignment, we'll be able to share with the board some of that baseline data that we've collected. And then we can share over time the impact of the curriculum on getting our students where they want to be at the very top echelon, not just on a single measure, but multiple different measures of their academic talents and growth over time. So that's kind of our next step. We're happy to answer any questions that we can. I want to again thank not only the two of them for being here tonight, that they did a lot of leading, both like before school, during the school day with release time, and after school, to have these really heavy conversations around math curriculum. And it's their expertise that really led to the guidance and following the structure to make the recommendations tonight. So very proud of the work that they did, and I think that I'm excited for what we've got coming in terms of math instruction across the district.
Thank you guys very much.
Academic group calendar discussion.
Right, so an outcome of the most recent legislative session impacted eLearning days. And so effective July 1st, a school district may only use three eLearning days with asynchronous learning, meaning you can post assignments and not have to have that live interaction. If you go beyond three, and you take, for example, a fourth eLearning day, it has to be fifty percent of the school day synchronous instruction with the teacher teaching live and all of the students present on the other end. That would equate to approximately two hours at the elementaries and three hours at the high school. We brought our teacher union discussion group back together to talk through that. We recollected on the eLearning parent survey that we conducted, and actually, that information came in handy for the conversation. The outcome of the conversation, the consensus was for elementary and the really young students to be at home for a solid two hours online was problematic for caregivers as well as the students themselves. And for that reason, that was a primary reason, we then took away the notion of doing synchronous learning as an eLearning day. What that meant was if we get three asynchronous, do we keep our professional development days or do we save them for potential snow days? The result of the conversation, we keep them for professional development. Because substitute teachers are difficult to come by, we've got important initiatives and goals in our district, and without release time for teachers to concentrate on professional growth, we felt that the value keeping professional development was important. However, with there being three days to work with, we want to guarantee two professional developments and leave the third asynchronous eLearning day as a flex day. So if we needed to use it as a makeup day, we could. And if we don't end up needing it, it would be turned into professional development. With the parent survey that went out, the majority indicated that they prefer not to have any makeup days automatically tacked on to the end of the school year, but instead to be embedded inside of the regular calendar. So the opportunity to make it up inside the regular school year was Martin Luther King Junior Day, President's Day, and the day after Easter. So the group indicated to use those three days as flex days in addition to the eLearning day. That would build in four possible flex days or makeup days in the school year. And then any additional makeup days that were needed, we'd have to be tacked on to them. This is just a discussion item tonight, getting your feedback input. We also want to take a look after recollection of that meeting, looking at that. I want to circle back around to the teacher union as well as Mr. Deal to see if we might want to reconsider that January eLearning day that comes pretty quick after winter break. Is there any potential opportunity to move that to February, late February, so that you could actually have a better chance to use it as a flex day?
Right now, that day falls on January 25th. Next, 22th of the school year is January 25th.
Right. Right.
So to confirm, you want to keep... Right now, we have three built-in eLearning days in our 22, 23 calendar.
Yes, September, November, and January.
Those three days, you want to keep as professional development days and keep them in the calendar as eLearning days?
Yes, the eLearning days in the calendar, September, November, for sure, professional development.
Okay.
And then take a look at that 30e learning day that's currently in January. And if we need to use it as a makeup, use it as a makeup. But if not, if it doesn't get used, then you keep it as professional development.
I feel like that's kind of early.
That's why we're... I held off. I said we want to circle back around to the teacher union and Mr. Deal, and maybe move that to later February, maybe even the first week of March.
Yeah, okay. Because now I feel like as far as weather-dependent days, that's pretty early. And I'd really like to keep a day as an option for eLearning for snow days.
Our testing windows don't begin until after spring break, so we've got flexibility in February and in March. We're really looking at like the RMEDA testing window, which we will be formally final pushing back.
So we intend to prep that up with the teacher union, double-check the testing, and then bring it back to you later on this month.
This is from DOE, you're from the Ashland State.
The DOE then had to do some interpreting of the new code. That's...
All right, appreciate it. Number one, approve the overnight athletic trip for the Lowell High School girls' basketball team to participate in the D1 camp at University of St. Francis in Fort Wayne, Indiana on June 13th to the 15th of 2022. I... Yes, you want to do these ones? I didn't want to get to the donations.
I'll make the motion to the group in a second.
I have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same side. Motion passes. Number two, ratify the overnight athletic trip for the Lowell High School softball team to participate in the Twin Lake softball tournament in Monticello, Indiana from May 6th to 7th, 2022. I have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same side. Motion passes. Number three, approve the Lowell Middle School summer band camp, which takes place June 6th through 9th, 2022, and June 13th to the 16th of 2022, from 8:00 AM to 11:00 AM at the Lowell Middle School at the cost of $60 per student. Seventh and eighth-grade students will take a trip to Deep River Water Park on Friday, June 17th, 2022.
I'll make the motion.
Sir?
I have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same side. Motion passes. Number four, approve Kyle Gober, Jonathan Flotter, James Lowery, Kylie Staneley as Lowell Middle School summer band camp instructors effective June 16th, or June 6th to the 16th of 2022. I have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same side. Motion passes. All right, the next one's I'll read over. Number five, accept the donation from Jean Haas Foundation in the amount of $12,000 to help fund the Lowell High School advanced manufacturing class. Number six, accept the donation from the Ronald and Denise Vance of Cedar Lake, Indiana, in the amount of $100 to help fund the Lowell High School Paul Hoffman Scholarship. Number seven, accept the donation from Rebecca Perez of Lowell, Indiana in the form of 24 bottles of hand sanitizers we use at Lake Prairie Elementary School. Number eight, accept the donation from Warden Makers Local 374 of Hobart, Indiana in the amount of $500 to help fund the Lowell High School welding program. Number nine, accept the donation from Lowell Lions Club in the amount of $1,008 to help fund the Lowell High School pride banquet. Number 10, accept the donation from the Lake Prairie Elementary School PTO in the amount of $102.90 for the field day ribbons. Number 11, accept the donation from the Free Greets Elementary School PTO in the amount of $220 to help fund the kindergarten study trip. Number 12, accept the donation from the Free Greets Elementary School PTO in the amount of $152 to help fund the grade-one study trip. Number 13, accept the donation from the Free Greets Elementary School PTO in the amount of $120 to help fund the grade-two study trip.
I'll make the motion. I'll say it.
I have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same side. Motion passes.
Thank you, everyone, for their donations.
Yeah, thank you very much for that.
I would like to... We also have Darryl Huggel here. One of these donations, he secured here, the $12,000 from advancing veterans. So a repeat of last year.
Third year.
Yeah, third year. Yeah, that's right.
What's your secret?
Yeah.
They want to help give people a degree.
That's awesome.
They get $20,000 a year.
That's awesome. Great job, security.
Thank you. It's a great first chance.
School safety, number one. Safety Goals Spring 2022 overview presentation.
Would you like to meet your new safety coordinator?
Yes, please.
I already do.
How did you manage to do that? It was like he was locked out and had a little minute. Where was mine? Where's your key?
They said you went to present it on your computer or. So.
Kevin, can you get it?
I can help you.
First, I'd like to thank the board for hiring me. Uh, I love it here, we have amazing staff in all the buildings. So I'm very excited to be a part of this community. So I wanted to definitely start off with that. Uh, a little bit about myself, I graduated from the police academy a very long time ago. I was an area police officer at university, um, Eastern Michigan University for several years. I then went on to be a school resource officer from Island Area Schools for six years. And my last seven years were at the Center for Forensic Psychiatry, working for the state of Michigan, where I learned quite a bit of stuff about mental illness. And, uh, working with the court system, with mentally ill people coming into a state facility and getting them where they can be restored and back out into the community. Some of them would, could be restored, some will never be restored, but that was probably a very good seven years, learning a lot, because in law enforcement, you don't get a lot of training for mental illness. So, very glad that I had that. Some of, some of the goals that I had when I, when I came to Lowell was, number one was definitely, um, active intruder protocol. I'm from the state of Michigan, I moved here to Indiana, so I'm new, I'm a Wolverine, now I'm a Hoosier, I guess. And, you know, we had an active shooter situation at one of our schools in Michigan in Oxford. So that is definitely a top priority on my list. Another thing was, I wanted to conduct a disciplinary analysis to see what kind of problems does Tri-Creek schools have, like what things are occurring in all the different schools. Another thing I wanted to do was do a stu- stu- uh, student survey. Actually, do a survey, grades three through twelve, asking them several questions, whether it had to do with mental health. How do you feel in your schools? Do you feel safe? So we're getting ready to launch that survey by the last week of school. The teachers are looking over some of the questions, and then hopefully this summer I can review that stuff and kind of have an idea of some concerns that students have. Get to know Tri-Creek, I wanted to make sure that I got out to, to meet everybody in the community and different organizations, the staff and the students. Working on graduation in June, making sure we have a good safety plan set up for that. Expand on the see something, say something, which I'll go into further on some other slides. It has to do with Sandy Hook. And our Safe Secure School Grant, working on that grant. And submitting the different forms that have to go with that. So get to know Tri-Creek, I was able to do a meeting with Chief of Police with Mr. Anderson. I was able to go to the high school and meet, um, the SRO Cory. I'm part of the district-wide leadership team. We, uh, we just attended the Lake County Safe Schools Committee meeting, um, and that was, that was a very good meeting. It was all the local SROs, directors of safety and security in the schools in the county. I was able to walk around and see the layout of the five schools in Tri-Creek. I actually had a teacher and a dean reach out to me and ask if I would be willing to do a bullying lesson in a fourth grade class. They were having some problems. And I said, absolutely, I love, I love going into the classroom and teaching, that's a little bit of my background too. I graduated from U of M with a teaching degree, so anytime I can get into a classroom or talk with kids, I'd love to do that. So I did a presentation for them, and I think it went over pretty well. I also went to Free Creeks because I wanted to see how the traffic was over there, especially during the morning and afternoon when the crossing guards are out there. You know, what does the traffic flow look like? Are there any safety, you know, safety concerns? What, what can we do to make it, you know, as safe as we can? Let's see, I went to prom, prom was great, I got to see all the kids at prom, all dressed up in, um, very good attendance. We didn't have any problems, the kids did great. I attended an anti-bullying conference with several of the staff from the building. In June, I'm going to be attending a suicide prevention instructor training. So I will hopefully become certified and be able to help out if there's any concerns with, you know, any, uh, suicide prevention stuff that's needed in the district. I've helped out at the middle school parent drop off and pickup, kind of seeing how the buses work, how the parents and traffic flow is coming into the parking lot. And I'm getting ready to go and work at the middle school dance in May, so I'm looking forward to that. I like to, to be at the events with the kids. You know, we need James, right? So our Safe Secure School Grant, um, I was able to establish a relationship with, um, Indiana Department of Homeland Security, talking with who our representative is, Tessa, Tessa Reed, yeah, Tessa Reed. So she's helped out quite a bit, any questions that we've had. I've learned about the Intellagrant system, the grant writing. I've looked over the, the grant that we received for that, worked with the dean and several other people with that. We're getting ready to, um, prepare the fiscal year report on that grant. And, uh, we're looking at just different options with, uh, the grant money, um, as far as like matching and stuff like that. So Sandy Hook Promise, I'm not sure if any of you have ever followed the Sandy Hook Promise. This was a big thing that Mr. Anderson wanted me to check into and find out a little bit more about it. Thought it'd be a great thing to bring to Tri-Creek. And we did a Zoom with them, and it was amazing. And, um, they said they would love to see Tri-Creek schools become a part of the Sandy Hook Promise. And, um, so what it does is it actually brings kind of a curriculum into the school district. It starts grades K and goes all the way up to twelve. And in the middle school and the high school, they have a mentoring program that, um, actually, you can use kids that are in different groups, whether it's FFA, if it's your honor society, band, a group of band students, and they become mentors to their classmates. And they will have different programs and different things that they can teach. So the Sandy Hook Promise, um, is a twenty-four, seven, three hundred and sixty-five day year reporting system that we are looking at implementing here. And the thing that's great about it is some of these reporting systems, they are not, there's not somebody live on the other end, they're not being monitored three hundred and sixty-five days a year, seven days a week. This one is. And the thing that's great about it is the people that are in the crisis center are very well trained. There are psychologists, social workers, they have extensive training. So if a call comes in from a student, a parent, whoever has something that they want to report, they will do a tier on it, and they will say whether this is like a tier one, this is something that's very important, somebody's going to do self-harm or harm to, harm to others. They will contact the police department, they will contact the school district. And just a, a really great program. Part of being able to use the Sandy Hook Promises, this, uh, Say Something is the students, the staff, and the parents would have to be trained in order for us to use this and to go live. That is something that we're working on with Sandy Hook, um, Promise. The other thing I touched a little bit about was a Save Club, and that is, uh, Students Against Violence Everywhere. And that was the mentoring program that I was talking about, that we can hopefully bring into the schools, and kids can help other kids, and they'll have a curriculum. And I think it will help with kids that maybe feel left out, or say they're being mean to kids, or any bullying. It's kind of a, you know, kind, caring, compassionate, empathy, it's bringing that into all the schools and teaching the kids that, you know, that's, that's what we're trying to bring into schools. So the active intruder protocol. What we did was we went and we tried to find the four top things that school systems were using. And we looked at what their protocols were. We looked at what was the best thing of each one of them. How much did each of them cost? What kind of training was there, you know, the implementation, putting it, bringing it into the schools? Was it age appropriate? You know, was it, was it okay to do whatever they were showing you for, you know, the younger children compared to middle school and high school? Is it something that's easy to recall, that people remember if there is a situation? And is every, and, you know, you want everybody on the same page. If something happens, we want to make sure everybody reacts the same, that people aren't, you know, reacting in different ways. And when we looked at the different programs that were out there, um, the best one that we found was the three outs. It's very easy to use, um, there's three things that you have to remember, get out, lock out, take out. And those can be in any order, depending on where you're at in the situation. You may be near a door, you can get out. You may be in a hallway, go in a room, lock out. Or you may have somebody in front of you, and you may have to make a decision. We felt like this was the easiest thing to teach students, staff, everybody in the district to remember. Some summer training, um, we are hoping to host, Tri-Creek, to be able to host Stratos, and Stratos is a company that teaches the intruder training to all the staff in the district. And we would really like to be one of the sites that they come in and they train our staff. And so we're working on, uh, something with that company right now, and actually trying to pull in other school districts to maybe learn to do the same type of training. And then hopefully I will be going to the suicide prevention instructor training in June. And there's another training, which is the National Association of School Resource Officers. And it's another training on crime prevention that is, um, works through like environmental design, buildings, safety, bushes, just to set up of the buildings, ways to make everything safer here in Tri-Creek. One of the, one of the goals I had when I came here was, I really wanted to make sure that the school district had a good relationship with our first responders. That is so important, when something happens, we have to all be on the same page, we have to have great communication. And so I wanted to make sure we had some kind of a meet and greet, and that they know who we are, and we know who they are, and that when we need them, they'll be here. So we contacted the Lowell Police Department, the Lake County Sheriff's Department, who is actually going to send us their tactical unit command officer and their patrol unit command officer to that meeting. And the Lowell Fire Department will be there, and Tri-Creek EMS. And we're going to be doing that on June fifteenth, and we're going to sit down and start talking about some emergency situations and how we can all work together and make sure all our schools are prepared. So, like I said earlier, some of the things I really wanted to look at was like disciplinary analysis, different things in the district that are going on in the different buildings. You know, whatever's happening in, you know, Oak Hill is obviously going to be different than what's happening at the high school and the middle school. And I reached out to the tech department, and Stephanie Flanagan was awesome. And she came through with making graphs for every building that we have here in Tri-Creek. So, to give you an example, this is Lowell High School. And this was as of yesterday. This gives me a breakdown of everything that happens in the high school from September till yesterday. Each day, we get a report, and it gets updated based on whatever happens. If somebody was in the school vaping today, that's going to be updated for me tomorrow, I'll know that there was another offense. And the goal is to look to see what, what are some problems that we have, what are some concerns? How can we make this, make this better, maybe some more education, or, you know, what do we need to do? It's a really good data to have. And this is Lowell Middle School. This gives you some ideas of some of the, you know, the offenses that they have here. Some of the things that we're going to work on is really making sure that we're putting the different offenses into right categories. Because we don't want our, our data to be, you know, say that we have all these offenses, but really they should be put in another area. And then you have Lake Prairie Elementary. This just kind of shows some of their, some of their things that they have over there. And then you have Free Creek Elementary, again, another breakdown for them. You've got Oak Hill. And then also what I can do, which I don't have that slide yet, um, is they can do district-wise, so I'll have a graph that'll show the whole district on one graph, and it'll do a breakdown of the whole district, what is going on, you know, is there a lot of incidents of insubordination? Or, you know, truancy, or what things are we having? So that's really great to have tho- those kind of stats, to know what's going on. So our, our student survey, uh, like I mentioned before, is going to go out, and it's going to be each, our grades three through twelve. Some of the questions may touch on mental health, you know, if they're stressed, what are some ways that they cope with stress? Do they have people that they can reach out to? There's some safety questions, asking them, you know, do you, do you feel safe in school? And if they don't feel safe, what are some reasons you don't feel safe? What are some concerns you have? How can we make things better in the schools? There's some questions that will actually let them know what the definition of bullying is, and what the definition of mean is. So they can kind of see there is a difference. So when we do the questionnaire, we can get a little bit more correct answers. And then there's some questions on vaping, to see, that's a huge thing. We went to our meeting and talked with other SROs and other districts, vaping is huge right now in the school systems, and they're starting young. So I absolutely want to do some education in the schools and hopefully prevent, you know, having a lot of, um, cases of vaping in the schools. And last but not least, we have graduation twenty-twenty-two. We have a meeting on May twentieth at the principal's setup, and we're going to talk about handicap parking, making sure we have enough of that. Our student parking, staff, how are traffic's going to be? They have a rain date already scheduled, making sure we have radios, equipment, all the staff to make sure graduation runs smooth this year. That was my last slide, are there any questions?
She's only been here six weeks.
I've been busy, I hit the, hit the ground running.
Welcome.
Yeah, no, thank you. Hopefully I was able to show you some of the stuff, you know, we're working on. Definitely, you know, trying to make it as safe as we can and educational, I, because I have an education background and law enforcement, I like to use both pieces. I like, I said, I love to go in classrooms and teach. And, you know, I really believe being preventative, that's how you don't get to this level. You know, it's all the prevention before that, so that's my goal.
Great, thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Thank you.
All ready. Next, we're going to move it to public comment, uh, for non-genitine. Deborah's going to read off your name, uh, please come up.
She has another one handed.
All right, uh, Deborah's going to read off your name, as, uh, as she reads off your name, please come up in, uh, speed. You'll have three minutes. Please try to keep it to that.
Mason Kreip.
All right, good evening, guten Abend. I did not expect to be speaking first, so going to try to set a standard for the rest of my colleagues who will be speaking about this tonight. Two weeks ago, my program got axed, my family got brought to the slaughterhouse, and I'm here to try and save it, my hail Mary. Now, radio TV for me, in middle school, I hated it. School sucks, middle school wasn't fun. It was miserable. And when I went to high school, I was expecting a lot of the same. And I won't lie, I was terrified. It's not a fun experience. Middle school isn't fun and going up to a much bigger area isn't fun either. And I believe fifth period, I walked in there, first day or second day technically, but second day of my first period, it's a different vibe. It is something completely different. It's a warm, welcoming environment. And it took maybe two, three months for me to find that this is the first subject I've truly understood. This is the first subject I genuinely have an understanding of and I can see a potential career. Because let's be honest, I have some of my teachers in here tonight. I would not go to college if it was not for radio and TV. I am not smart enough. But when it comes to radio and TV, I'm, I mean, I'm not going to toot my horn, but I'm aboard of my genius. Because I was offered a program and a place to do it where I could express myself for not only in art, but something that controls almost everything. Nowadays, you get your politics from the news. You get everything from the news. You go home, you watch entertainment. It's such a large field and I feel like it's very underappreciated. A lot of my colleagues are going to come up here and they're going to talk about their success. For me, a person who struggles in a lot of our classes, I got $20,000 in scholarships alone for one of Chicago's best schools because I worked hard. I've made professional commercials through like-minded fields. I've gotten my things up on billboards. And it really hurts me to hear that my program is going away. And it's okay, everybody makes mistakes, but it's just, for four years, it's become my family. And it's been the genuine thing that's gotten me interested in all school activities. I didn't think I had RDP and besides Mr. Hudek, I think I have the most RDP. And everybody in our program is in second and third place probably. But it's my family is the soul, is the soul of the Lowell High School. If you can't make it football night, because that is the true soul, you can watch it because we livestreamed it. If you can't, I'm trying to keep it 20 seconds, so don't waste your time. My family is here. I don't want it to go away. I want kids like me to have the same opportunities I had. You save a bundle on everything we do for the school. I've learned a lot. I've met a true family and I've had a true mentor. My five, four, three, two, one second throw up. Thank you for letting me speak.
All right, Charles Winchman.
Charles Winchman, actually. I'm talking about the same subject, which is the radio TV program getting axed. I also came into the high school not knowing even what the program was, what the class was of all. And quickly I found my passion in life. I actually also got accepted to the same school that Mason got accepted to for with around $24,000 a year in scholarships. And that's just about 75% of the actual tuition of Columbia. I have been able to be in the program for four years, which is like the most I could squeeze out of it as a single student. And I have been able to do projects for the school, such as the SRP video that got shown around the high school last year, I mean, this year. I worked on the custodian hiring video that we used to, I think that was a successful mission to hire custodians that are students for the school, which we actually got an award for in our own state competitions at the Indiana Association of School Broadcasting. I, I, the thing that irks me the most about the decision to do this is the, I, this decision does not affect me in any way. I have taken a class four years. I am graduating in a matter of weeks. And the class has meant the most to me and I've been able to really know what I want to do with my life through it. But the people who are already taking the class are maybe in the intro or the radio and TV one class that have already found out that this is what they want to do, cannot further this. They can't go to more state competitions. Their portfolio will be smaller if they wanted to go into a similar field or school as me. I actually, when the news came out, I was in stracks and an eighth grader just stopped me and like they recognized me from the little show we do. And they like talked to me about how they wanted to take the class and how they were saddened by it not having the chance to going forward. So the, the thing that just hurts me the most is I think that this class provides a student with the most voice they can have in the school, being able to speak freely and express themselves in a way that it can reach practically everyone. And now this, they do not even have the chance to do this going forward. I do think that it's the most one can express themselves, at least in quantity wise. I think so quality too, but it, it just, I, I think, I think that it, it's just been really great to me and it hurts that other people won't have the chance.
Adam Morgan.
Okay, so like Charlie said, this program, the whole getting rid of it thing isn't going to affect me either. Because I graduated last year and I'm currently at Ball State for the same thing, TCOM degree, you know, video production. And the thing is, it would not affect me right now since I'm there. But it would have affected me if I wasn't there yet. Like say the kids, like, you know, the radio and TV one kids, even the intro comm kids, which are the prerequisite type of classes. If I was in that level of class and I found out this news, there is no way I would be where I am right now. Because in where I am in college right now, I work on sort of a talk show thing, sort of similar to this, but more like a professional environment with like, you know, bigger equipment and schedules and all that. And this program really taught me how to work in not only a career environment, but like a workplace of a career that I want to pursue. And it almost gave me sort of motivation that you can do this, you can work in an area like this. You've done this before. Because if I went into that school with the career I had and no experience in it, then I wouldn't have joined the things I wouldn't have, that, join the things, try to get that limit. Wanted to join the things I did. I wouldn't have taken the opportunities I have because I feel held, I would have felt held back because I'd be missing any experience. And I know experience is everything when you get into that field, you know? You gotta have experience in this before you do this. Oh, you want to get this job? You don't have the experience for it. People hear that every day, I'm sure. And it's just, it's just good to have that experience. And I feel like the whole school, what I've got from this presentation is a lot about RDP, Red Devil Pride, expressing that. And teachers have no problem expressing that, you know, around the school, staff doesn't. But the way the students express it is through that media that we make. They would express, you know, their gratitude and like, oh, it's spirit week, so we're going to make videos about it. Or, oh, it's a certain month, so we're going to make videos about this to promote it. And it was a way where, you know, if you maybe make them wear an outfit or uniform or something, that's kind of forcing that expression out of them. But through this, it's not just expressing it, it's a passion. And it was their way to express that. And I feel like if you're taking that away, you're taking away a way to show that not only the staff has that RDP that everyone here admires, but the students have it too. And I just really, I really, I really want just everyone to have that opportunity. Because I was nervous, I'm not good at math, I'm decent at history. Okay, that's low grade, cool, you know? But that was my thing. I've had this passion for such a long time. And I was thinking when I came in here, I was like, is there a career out of this? Is this just like a hobby? You know, like upload to YouTube, maybe get like 20 views if I'm lucky? But when I came into this club, I was, or class, my bad. I was shown that there is a career here. There is people that also want to do this. There are opportunities, there are places local and even statewide that I can do. People are making commercials and that's it.
Blake Devol.
My name's Blake. I'd like to speak on the impacts that radio TV has had on my life. I go to Ball State. I went to Ball State as a telecommunications major. And in my time as a TCOM major, I began to realize how much information I'd actually learned earlier in radio TV. Things like how to navigate video, audio editing software, knowledge of different types of hardware, how to prep for recording, composition basics, proper studio etiquette, have been absolutely pivotal in my understanding of my college course content and given me a leg up on my peers. I was well beyond prepared for my classes and I was able to actually go well beyond the expectations of my professors right from the start. I then changed my major to music media production. And even as I changed my major, I continue to use the skills from radio TV every single day in my classes. Thank you to radio TV. I have a basic understanding of how to manipulate and edit audio for commercial use. I have understanding of signal path, different types of microphones. And in general, my college projects are much more manageable, given that I already have much experience in this area. I have the ability to focus solely on the creative aspects of my projects as the technical aspects are already comfortable and I already have a basic understanding of them. I'd like to thank Mr. McQuinnon and Mr. Jennings because it was in that radio TV class that I developed my passion for audio and found my path in life. And I'd like to say if you consume media in any way, if you watch any videos anywhere, if you listen to any sort of audio at any point in your life, this is something that that affects. This is, this is how you have a understanding of that. The media is, runs the world. Media runs everything. Anytime you open Facebook, anytime you watch any sort of video, this is involved. And there's no other better way to learn that than through a class. And if I didn't have the class, then I wouldn't be nearly as successful as I am in college today.
Matt McQuinnon.
So you're going to find it hard to believe, but I didn't ask any of these guys to, I'm sorry. I'm sure you don't believe that, but I didn't. Thanks. Wow. I don't, I don't know how I can top any of it. But the good news is that I really wasn't here tonight to try and top any of it. I'm not here tonight to ask you to try to save my job. I'm not even here to ask you to try to save the program. It's just, what affects me the most is that if the program does go away, as is the plan, I'm more worried about that. It's when you look down and maybe that program wasn't a success. And I think this kind of shows it. Maybe that's not just it. But I also have 28 other alumni in my phone that I can read off, but I've been looking at it all day, so I can probably just rattle a few off. I just want it to be remembered as a success. We've done over 200 Friday shows. The Friday show is a weekly show. We produce a weekly television show. I can assure you, as somebody who came from the ABC seven Chicago, it is really hard to produce a television show, but we do it weekly across three different classes. We have done over 60 different live streams over my time here at Lowell High School, including three, four seasons with the Lowell Red Devil Football, where we partnered with Region Radio Sports Network out of Indianapolis, where we were their crew for these games. They supplied the commentators, professional commentators, and we became a crew. That partnership, Mason talked on a little bit, that, that'll go away. 200 Friday shows, like I said, so the Friday show is a weekly entertainment info show. So we sponsor, we show clubs. Any good stuff that's going on in the school, a few silly movies. I took over the program. I've been a teacher here for six years. I took over the pro, fully took over the program five years ago. And in that time, we joined the Indiana Association of School Broadcasters, which is a competition between 60 other schools in Indiana. In those five years, we've won 14 state awards. Some of those guys are standing here right now. Jacinda Akins right there. She's going to graduate in a couple of weeks. She's going to Columbia, I'm sorry, to DePaul University with quite a bit of scholarship money. She also won first place for music video. That's a first for Lowell High School. We never won first place in music video competition. She won that this year for a video she completely produced on her own in Chicago with a dance team she reached out to. Some other alumni that couldn't make it here tonight, Haley Alexander, who's at Butler University for communication. Do you guys remember her? I believe she was a finalist for one of the Lilly Scholarship Awards. She's at Butler studying communication. She just got named on Monday there, last Monday there for the Butler Bulldogs Football Program. She's their chief videographer now. Andrew Kish is working, who left school a few years ago, got a scholarship for the YSN Sports Academy. He now works for them and has his own podcast. He just interviewed the head coach of the Los Angeles Lakers. Emma Hutchinson, who's at Columbia right now, got $40,000 because of her Friday show segments in money. She's also the lead person for Ed Ableton, all of their car, he's a Chicagoan area. I'm running out of time, but I have 20 other alumni stories that I can speak on. I just want the program to be, if it gets cut for financial reasons, fine, still be it. But it certainly is not because it was not a success. And I would really like for the board to know that. If you'd like to see any of our work, it's on the LHS social media page, at least for now. We have six years worth of videos, all of them are pretty great, most of them. Thank you guys.
I really appreciate all you guys coming and having a gait for the program. We will, as a board, we will definitely take that into consideration in the decision that we make. Very impressive, you guys coming up and speaking. Very good. Appreciate it.
You guys all did great. Thank you. Next up, our final speaker of the night is Shannon Cottle.
I'm here to bring attention to a book that was written some of our honors 10 English classes in high school. The Bluest Eye by Toni Morrison. I would consider this book to have pornographic sections and be grooming for pedophilia. Staff has called it good literature and while that may be true for an older audience, it is also subjective. My goal is to have this book removed from our curriculum and to have a set of guidelines implemented for future reading material. Please do not misunderstand me. I don't suggest removing all content that may have pieces of semi mature content here and there. But there needs to be a protocol in place for books that cross the line and material that does cross that line needs to be removed. I think that I'm in the majority who would agree that The Bluest Eye absolutely does cross this line that hasn't been placed yet. I don't argue that this Nobel Prize winning book has some educational content or lessons to be taken from it. However, it is for adult readers and should be at a college level discussing vividly such sensitive and traumatic topics. Although it is primarily a book based on racial issues, the graphic nature of the book is what changes the suggested audience. The sexual content, descriptive, very descriptive, rape of a child and sexual abuse makes it entirely inappropriate for 15 and 16-year-old children, because that's what they are. Not to mention the possibility of a victim of abuse being in one of these classes. My main point is that educators are here to educate. Discussing topics like this in such a descriptive manner makes our jobs as parents more difficult. It's our job as parents to shed light on the evil and sexual abuse that does exist in the world and does not belong in a public setting, especially in the classroom. In a public school setting where girls can't show their bellies, bare their shoulders, where teenagers are just starting to understand their own bodies, bullying is all time highs, body shaming happens almost daily. At an age where we're trying our best as parents to raise decent, respectful children, to be respectful of girls' bodies, to behave appropriately with them, where mental health concerns and victimization are everywhere we turn. This is not an issue of conservativeness, it's an issue of choosing more appropriate reading material and to give our children a chance to mature on their own personal timelines, not the ones set in our district. To give you a very uncomfortable example, page 162 regarding the rape of his 11-year-old daughter. A bolt of desire ran down his genitals, giving it length and softening the lips of his anus. Surrounding all of the lust was a border of politeness. He wanted to fuck her tenderly, but the tenderness would not hold. The tightness of her vagina was more than he could bear. Forty more seconds of this, oops. Removing himself from her was so painful to him that he cut it short and snatched his genitals out of the dry harbor of her vagina. She appeared to have fainted. Page 178. Let me tell you about the breasts of little girls. I apologize for the inappropriateness, is that it? The imbalance of loving them at awkward times of day and awkward places? The butts in some of these saplings, they were mean, you know, mean and tender. But aggressive, daring me to touch, not shy as you'd suppose. The little girls are the only things I'll miss. Do you know when I touched their sturdy little tits and bit them just a little, I felt I was being friendly? If I was hurting them, would they have come back?
Shannon, that's fine.
That's in our school. That's in our school.
Thank you for your.
Sorry, you're not in quiet, right? Please know how worse it may be.
Thank you for your readiness.
Thank you, Shannon, for bringing that to our attention. This board will be more.
Do you guys want coffee?
What's that?
Do you guys want coffee? I heard more about it.
I own the book.
I read it. At her, you know, hearing about it. This board will take it into consideration and figure out what we will do. But I appreciate you bringing it to our attention. Thank you. I'd like to thank everybody that came and spoke tonight, coming and supporting and advocating for anything is always appreciated from.